Awesome. Good afternoon. We are here today to speak about Medicare Advantage and get your court and take any questions and provide some feedback for you all in terms of Medicare Advantage products for a subset of your retirement population. My name is Jeffrey Brewer. I am the current GMR Account Manager. GMR, as you know, is your third-party administrator who currently processes and pays claims, medical claims on the board's behalf. GMR is United Healthcare. If you look at the backside and the front side, you're at ECR. I have with me today is Joanne Wessel, who will talk about Medicare Advantage product. She is the client, the VP of Client Development for our United Retiree Solutions Department. So she'll be up in a little bit. As we were reviewing, we do an annual review, yearly review, we continue to notice the size, the dollar amount of the spend for the board from the retired population. And so we had three considerations as we went through and met with Al and Casey and Gwen, along with your brokers Brown and Brown. Our three considerations were we wanted to enhance the benefits from today's benefit for the retired population. We wanted to reduce costs for both the board and for the retirees. And finally, we wanted to improve the overall financial positioning for the board. And so I'll speak to that one for just a quick second. I'm not an accountant, but Casey can probably speak if you have any questions about that. From a perspective of your responsibilities, from an accounting perspective, your casualty liability, you are, when retiree comes through, you have that retiree and are responsible for their medical claims and you have protectors forward on your financials. And so that affects your bond rating. This product, which is a fully insured product for United Healthcare, will begin to make decisions for those claims that the retirees are making and will remove any financial responsibility you all have for the retirees for the long term. So that then comes off of your financials and would improve the, hopefully, bond ratings as you go through. Again, if you've got some additional questions, Casey, do you have any additional feedback on that?
Yeah, we share with, with, with liability that we have to carry that has, the only reason we can't get a bond rating is because we have to carry that liability for our own.
Excellent. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gwen Carrier to discuss some financial impact in terms of the savings, the reduction of cost for both the board and the member. Gwen?
I'm going to stand here and I think everybody probably can hear me. Board members, you should have had in your packet a sheet that shows our comparative financial statements and then at the bottom half should show an analysis of the United Healthcare Group Medicare Advantage product. The first section, the top section that shows our comparative financials is a comparative 11 months for the last 12 years. Last year, fiscal year 1920, after 11 months, we were posting a $785,000 loss in the group health plan. That was because the first nine months of the year were really, really tough on us. We had some big claims who were afraid that we might have to look at an increase in premium and then COVID hit and our claims costs just came to a screeching halt. So this was only one area that I knew of that COVID had a positive impact, wasn't just at the school board, but it was something that was seen nationwide. And we're starting to see some of those claims turn around as people go and do elective care. But still, in this fiscal year, we are looking positive at nine months, March, $344,000. And we had a fund balance carryover from last year of $5.1 million. So as of 11 months ending in May, our group health plan has been solid with a $5.5 million fund balance. But as Jen alluded to, we're always looking for ways to improve the financial performance of our plan, looking at keeping member costs down and enhancing benefits whenever we can, which our brokers Brown and United Healthcare brought to us of a potential Medicare product and looked at it in the past. But this year, for the last two years of data, the numbers look very, very good. As this is to the second half of the analysis, this is a subset of our Medicare eligible members. It would be the person that has Medicare A and B. And so it would be people that have single coverage that are Medicare eligible and have A and B or both, the member and their spouse has Medicare A and B. So the bottom line on this whole entire analysis is that we will be saving money and enhancing benefits to our members if we were to proceed with the Medicare Advantage plan. The cost differential, the very bottom part of the analysis, our total expenses that we have on the group, this group of members now, we would say $816,000 or $817,000. Of that savings, we have a reduction in premium to each member of $42 per month off of their premium. And so that would reduce the amount of the overall savings to right at $0.5 million, which would be a savings to the board. So in the future, we can look at potentially, look at ways to where we can split, handle some of our split contracts where one member has Medicare and the other is too young to have Medicare. But so for this analysis, we looked at where both people were eligible for Medicare A and B.
How would that be handled if the spouse is not eligible?
As of right now, they wouldn't be eligible for the Medicare Advantage, the group Advantage program, but when they were both eligible, our next year, we've been looking at the possibility of, okay, how can we track those people? Because the main thing is, we would be auto-enrolling all eligible people into the Medicare Advantage product if this is approved. It would go into effect January 1. Every year, we would have to have an open enrollment period, just like Medicare has an open enrollment period. And I guess we probably do that in November effective January 1. And the state will require us to, because we have to follow the eligibility rules of the state of benefits, they require us to have that as an option. Since we would be auto-enrolling all eligible Medicare members, of course, we'll have a series of meetings with members and mailouts before that. We would give them three months so by the, before March 31st, they could contact Casey, who's at our office twice a week at least, and then tell us if they want to disenroll and get back on their claim. So we would give them, we would be giving our members options at that point.
But what would it cost for the spouse's coverage if you're eligible as a retired book, would it go up for the spouse's cost of insurance?
They would go to the regular, well, they would have to stay on our, right now, when they have a split, they would have to stay on our regular claim.
There would be no impact to costs.
It wouldn't change the cost?
No cost. In fact, those particular matters at this point, that's correct.
So we're looking at the Medicare Advantage plan as something to offer to that subset of Medicare people that are have A and B, but also for our regular members who are not eligible for Medicare program. We will have an enhancement of January 1. There's the expansion of our tier one, such that all primary care physicians, nurse practitioners, primary care, so not specialists, would be in the $15 code pay. Because we've had instances, especially in maternity, where somebody selects a primary care doctor, that's tier one, so they're expecting, you know, no deductible and a $15 paid for visit, but by the time they deliver, the doctor has lost their tier one status and then they were faced with deductibles that they were not expecting. Plus, having this, we will have more members who will go to their primary care rather than potentially show up at the emergency room or at the urgent care, which is more costly to the plan. So there's something in this pretty much for everyone in our, our.
Yeah, if Russell's to keep that, that's the same or increase it. So I think it accomplishes that.
And then I'll turn it over to GMR and to Gwen, because she can talk about the enhanced benefits that these Medicare eligible people would receive.
Okay, do you guys care where I stand? Is this, can everybody interview okay?
Yeah.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Joanne Wessel. I'm with United Healthcare. And I'm here just to talk a little bit about the United Healthcare Retiree Solutions Plan. I'm not sure who's driving the deck. I know some of you have the presentation in your packet and I'm going to go through it pretty quickly, hit it at a very high level, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I'm going to spend the bulk of the time on two of the slides in the presentation that have to do with benefit enhancements that this plan actually adds to the benefit plan that's in existence today. So I'm going to go to the second slide if somebody can move that along. The key point I want to point out here on this slide is the fact that we are not new in this space. We've been doing this, we've been doing retiree solutions and Medicare supplement Medicare Advantage for over 40 years. Right now, we've got a 98% client retention rate, which shows you that clients not only come to us, but they stay with us. You'll notice, we just put a sample list of some clients that we thought that you would recognize, other parish school boards, other parish governments, other parish sheriff's offices. Just want to give you a sample of other folks that are actually using this exact same plan inside for their retirees. Okay, moving on to the next slide. Just to tell you a little bit about the product and how it works, because this is not a street plan. This is not an individual plan. This is not one of those plans that you hear about every year. If you're a retiree now, you can inundate every fall with street plans, individual plans. This is a plan that was custom built for St. Martin Parish School Board of Retirees. So it's a custom plan and the idea was to take the plan, match it and enhance it to improve the benefits. But this is a national footprint, so it covers the entire U.S. So if you've got, you know, folks that like to move somewhere else or travel somewhere else, this benefit covers the entire U.S. and all U.S. territories. So you don't have to worry about traveling out of the service area and not having coverage or, or going to see your grandkids and having different coverage while you're there. This benefit travels with you and your benefits stay the same no matter where you go. And in addition to it being national, this network is what we call passive. So what that means is the benefits are exactly the same in-network and out-of-network as long as you go to either a United Healthcare Medicare Advantage provider or a Medicare accepting provider. So if the provider is not in our network, that they accept Medicare, your benefits stay exactly the same. They don't change, which is nice. So if you're a retiree today and you're eligible for Medicare or your doctor accepts Medicare, you just need your doctor. You don't even have to worry about changing doctors at all. Also, the benefit experience, if you, let's say you live here and then, you know, six months out of the year, you want to live somewhere else, your benefit experience travels with you and stays the same regardless of where you go. All right, next slide. Just want to talk a little bit about the, the network. We have the largest network of any Medicare Advantage carrier in the country. We have over 830,000 providers. In Louisiana alone, we have over 11,000 providers. We've had 56 facilities. That doesn't even count the providers that take Medicare. So your access is not available at all in this, this benefit. Okay, next slide. So this is where I've spent a little bit of time. The next two slides are all about benefit enhancements and things that are either baked into this plan that we include automatically or the things that we can specifically add to for St. Martin Parish School Board. I'm going to talk about house calls and member rewards and this to say, so I'm going to touch on some of these others. So if you may actually help me at home, this is a great benefit. This is a benefit for post-discharge meals, so in-home meal delivery, transportation and in-home personal care. And that benefit resets every single time you have a patient stay or a skilled nursing facility stay. So let's say you go into the hospital, you stay there for whatever your stay is, you leave, you have this benefit. Three months later, you have to go back to the hospital or a skilled nursing facility. That benefit resets again, so meals, transportation, in-home personal care. It's a very popular benefit. The fitness benefit is a great benefit as well. This is a free gym membership. So you can go to any gym in the network and you don't even have to pick one gym. So let's say there's 10 gyms in your, your area where you live. If you want to go to one gym because you like their pool and you want to go to another gym because you like their classes or you like, you want to go to another gym because your friend goes there for one of their, for fitness classes, you can rotate around to get one of those gyms. And those are things that we talk about when we do these educational meetings. And then the United Healthcare hearing benefit. We matched the hearing aid allowance that you have today, but what we do is we actually couple that with a significant savings program that's up to 80% off of hearing aids. That's significant. I don't know if you've ever tried the hearing aid? The hearing aids are very expensive. A lot of times, folks don't go and buy them because they are so expensive. So in addition to the hearing aid allowance, you get a significant discount on top of that. And then there are the awards. This is one of the most popular benefits. You actually get gift cards for doing healthy behaviors. So let's say, for instance, you are diabetic and you need to go in for your A1C or let's say you're due for a mammogram or you're due for a prostate exam or you're due for a colonoscopy. Those are all things we love to do, right? Not so pleasant, but in this situation, what we're going to do is give you gift cards and rewards for doing those healthy behaviors. And then you can use work that you want to use those gift cards for. And then podiatry. This is in addition to podiatry that you can get for medical conditions. This is podiatry, routine podiatry. A lot of seniors have prone temper problems and can't take care of their feet. You get podiatry benefits in addition to the benefits that you can get from medical conditions. So I'm going to stop there and ask if there's any questions before I cover the next set of enhancements.
I didn't understand the fitness benefit.
So it's a free gym membership, so that means you basically can show your United Healthcare card, show up at the gyms in the network and you get to go to that gym for free.
That has to be in the department?
It does. It does. Unlike the medical benefits, you can go in the network or if you go to any Medicare provider, for the fitness benefits, you have to go to in-network gyms.
Yeah, for some reason, we have a local gym within the parish that's not in the network. Would you, if we tell you about this, can you approach this gym or vice versa?
Yeah, we've already actually done that. We had one come up just recently. We've already reached out to them and already started that process, so absolutely. We used to use Silver Sneakers. Some of you may have heard of that benefit. We've actually built our own benefit that is Silver, what I call Silver Sneakers on steroids. It's a larger network, it has more gyms, and in addition to the gyms, it also has things like brain health assessments, brain health games, social digital interaction. This is, this is a really beefed up benefit that's similar but more robust and so.
So you said you're showing a card on those gyms that qualify?
Uh-huh. It's very, very simple and you can use all of the gyms in the network.
And what gym did y'all approach here from the case?
The one that we just newly approached is called PAPs or.
PAP, big?
Yeah. Some of the ones I've, I've had a list, I've got a list with me, but Lifetime Fitness, Planet Fitness, Anytime Fitness, I'm doing these all the time.
Then we can check if it's anywhere below or it's, they have it there, basically capped in.
It was centralized, so I didn't know there, but if there are any others, then you can get that information. Y'all can get the information to me and I can pass it on if there's any other gym that y'all were, you know, would want them to approach. But they have like the nationwide, like you said.
Yeah, we already have a Medicare. Yeah, we already have a really robust one. We just approached this one because it was really close by and doesn't already do the network.
Okay, so all of this, this is all the, do there a noise control?
Exactly.
Now how about dental and eye?
Dental.
Everything?
Great segue, so next slide. So the, the next set of benefits that I'm going to touch on are benefits were, that were added specifically for St. Martin Parish School Board to further enhance the benefits. So these three benefits are vision, dental and an over-the-counter benefit, which we call the drugstore benefit, to go and get your supplies just like you go to the drugstore, which you, it's like paying free money to go to the drugstore. But I'm going to start with the vision. So the benefit, the vision benefit includes a vision exam, but it also includes a hardware allowance. So you get the choice of having eyeglasses or contacts and there's what we call a hardware or a brand or contact lens allowance that goes with the, the vision benefits, that you get the exam and the hardware, that there's allowance to where that. And on top of vision, there's also a dental benefit. So it covers preventative diagnostics, that when you need your teeth cleaned, it's covered at 100%. And then we cover minor services at 80%. And there's a manual deductible, a deductible of $50 and a $1,000 maximum every year. So that resets every year. So basically, you're getting $1,000 for dental for that particular benefit, but for the preventative diagnostic, it doesn't go toward that, that maximum. So if you go get cleanings, that's a, that's basically essentially free pocket with the cost to be for cleaning. And then the third benefit is an over-the-counter benefit where you get a $40 allowance every quarter to buy things like cough medicine, aspirin, vitamins, things that you would go to the drugstore and buy that are over the counter. And that benefit resets every quarter, so every quarter, you get another $40 to go and spend on your over-the-counter items. So that would be the time to go stock up on things that you would, you know, normally go to the drugstore.
Does the balance roll over, let's see?
No, it does not, so you need to spend it.
$40 all at once?
It's $40 every quarter.
All at once, purchase? What was the meaning?
And you can, and you can do it by phone, through a catalog, through the mail or online. And keep in mind that we provide, Gwen mentioned this earlier, but we provide several face-to-face educational meetings where we go into tremendous detail on the plan design, the benefit enhancements, how they work, things like the benefit resetting. I'm doing kind of the speed dating version right here today, but when we do the meetings for, for retirees, we're spending about an hour to an hour and a half presentation followed by questions after that meeting and then one-on-one sessions where everybody wants to stay after that for one-on-one. So we, that, that's something that we feel like is really important, just to make sure everybody understands how the benefits work.
Excuse me, you can see your hand in the description?
We do.
So I, I just wanted to make, just say something. I, I, I was recently just got a prescription that they presented this year. If I was going on our health plan, I would pay $12 for one and $15. I went to GoodRx and I paid $10. You know, I'm trying to puzzle right now that GoodRx is a free system.
Yeah, I, I get it.
And that might not need the prescription because if every person who's on the health plan goes to GoodRx, their father saves tremendous money, then gone through our, uh, the, uh, phone.
So the current prescription plan is managed by Southern Strips, so it's a PBM. So the, the plan that everybody's on now is Southern Strips. For the Medicare Advantage plan, it would be United Healthcare prescription drugs. And we did take the preferred benefits from this, from the current plan and we enhanced that benefit by using the preferred generic code pay. And then we also added a lot of other whistles and bells, like we did our most robust formulary. We added a bonus drug list. We added full gap coverage. You don't have to worry about going to a preferred versus a non-preferred pharmacy. You can use our entire, entire national network and the code pay stays the same. So our, our pharmacy benefit would be a different provider than what we have current. And that's a great point. I mean, prescription drugs are, are, you know, it's a huge cost. I mean, I've been doing this for over 30 years and when I first started in the business, pharmacy was like 2% of your total cost. And now it's 25% or more of your total cost. Now a lot of that has to do with the rise of specialty drugs and also the advertising of drugs. But a lot of these specialty drugs are awesome. They're expensive, but they certainly will last. So it's just, it's a shift and a spin, but, but we do a lot to, to help with, with managing that as well. I'm probably going to get the hook if I keep talking too much longer, but I do have a couple more. Okay, so do you want me to, I've got a couple more slides or are you going to keep going or are you going to shut it down?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So going to the next slide, I'll be brief. I just want to talk about the house call benefit. This is exactly what it sounds like. So we have employees, clinicians that are for United Healthcare that do this benefit. We don't contract this out. We don't lease this out. This, these, everybody that does house call for us is a physical clinician that works for United Healthcare. We hire more clinicians than any other private organization. We hire more clinicians than the DA. We have 2,200 clinicians across the country just for this benefit. So this is a house call benefit where we go into the home of the retiree, we spend 45 minutes to an hour sometimes longer, full level history, compliments, review of vacations. Basically, we're spending an hour with the, we tax all that data we share with the primary care physician. And also we have a member reward, a gift card for doing this, this house call. But it is voluntary, so if you don't want to do a house call, you don't have to, but it's voluntary, but most people who do this, look. Next slide is member rewards. I've already talked about this, but basically this is where you get gift cards for doing healthy behaviors. So you can get $50, $20, $25, different things for different services, but if, if we're asking you to go get a screening, we're, we're offering you gift cards for those practical services. All right, and then I'm going to get one more slide. I'll promise to be brief. I'll do it again by talking about our star ratings. So star ratings in the world of Medicare is a big deal. It's a big deal because what it does is it dictates your funding, in subsequent year, but it also talks to the quality of the health plan. Four and a half stars is a big deal. We have been, 100% of our members are in four and a half star plans and we have been at four or four and a half stars since the inception of the star system. This is how CMS, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid, ranked our service as a carrier. We get judged on 43 different measures in how we're performing as a carrier and you have to get reevaluated every single year. So you can't get your four stars and sit back under walls. You've got to keep performing. And CMS changes the rules a little bit every year, so you have to stay on top of that. But it has to do with quality of care, customer service and how we're performing as an organization.
There's one other piece behind that presentation in your packet. It's a two or three pager and it lists out the benefits that this plan would offer to our retirees. And if you take just a quick look at that, you'll see a lot of zeros. Okay, that's, that's an accurate statement. A lot of these things, there is no code pay, zero, zero dollar portion to the retiree. The plan will pick that up. Again, that's, that's part of the premium. So as you review that, again, you'll see a lot of zeros. Probably only dollar amounts will be on those prescription costs. And again, if you have a prescription that costs less than those code pays, you would get the advantage of saving or paying that amount as opposed to the code pay. So if the code pay is higher, you do not pay that. The other thing I just want to quickly touch on that Joanne mentioned, and we discussed a lot in our pre-meetings, the sell for, for this product for me is what Joanne mentioned about half a half year of Medicare retirees who have questions, that have questions about where to go for service, how is this going to, is it really zero dollars? People telling me zero dollars is what I'm going to do, I'm going to do that. So all those questions are going to be answered. If a retiree has questions after that, and they went all the middle of the plane here and spent three hours on the phone with these folks, they can't. There's no time limit, you know, today only act your plan, unfortunately, there are metrics involved and we've got to meet certain criteria on to say, hey, you know, we're going to help you and, and get you to the right space and, and those are time. This is not. This is about the retiree and their stage in life, about understanding what's going on and being really transparent with that. So again, we're here to answer your questions today about this, hoping to gain your support to move forward for January, the first effective date for those retirees. And then we would get a timeline together along with the communication team through the tip of Casey and Gwen and go through every single detail about this plan and how we would interact with retirees, staging those, those meetings with them and then ultimately moving to an enrollment team.
We did, we did a disruption analysis for like all of our local pharmacies just to make sure that, you know, if you're a senior and you're used to your pharmacist and you want to continue, we had no disruption. So all of our current pharmacies that are on our current school board plan are also in that work on the Medicare Advantage plan. In addition, the, the plan also calls for, or requesting that we include compensation for Brown and Brown because normally there's a commission built into the plan. We extract that commission, but Brown and Brown, every year, will have additional enrollment work that any of our previous brokers had, have, and we have to do an annual enrollment. So included in this would be a $10,000 compensation for Brown and Brown for their services each year regarding any changes in. for their services each year regarding any changes in eligibility for the Medicare Advantage.
Additional questions?
We need to ready the move to have Morgan Bache second by outside. Steve, Autumn Taylor, and an A, and a G, Karen. You need to go louder. I'll get it. You need to go louder if you hear. Use your hands to hear. Okay? So you got it.
I got it. There was an A. First you pointed. And an A, then Morgan Bache. He's going to the next item. Consider our recommended actions in regards to S R O opposite.
Skip those again.
Oh. Consider our recommended action in regards to the salary schedule.
This item was on last month's agenda. If you look at the memo that you're moving with it, we've already dealt with items one and two. And I'm going to ask that we postpone item seven until next month because in doing the research, we have, there's more information needed to research on the indexing for our coaching. So what I'd like to do is deal with items three, four, five, and six tonight, which we discussed last month. I'll entertain any questions that anybody has.
I have one, Mr.. Sure. Okay, the first one that I'm going to bring up is the salary schedule, the salary payment of our executive secretary. I feel that, you know, quite a few years ago, Mr. Knott brought something up to our, to the board's attention that we had other employees making more than that position. And it was, in my opinion, I had to agree with him, but nothing was taken. Excellent. It actually failed. But after speaking with Superintendent Blanchard and CFO, Ms. Bruce Art, I see that, like, Lafayette Parish, their executive secretary is at twenty-one fifty-five an hour. And after discussing it with me and Ms. Bruce Art, she felt probably a good rate would be eighteen dollars and seventy-nine cents? Yeah, eighteen seventy-nine per hour. And that's what I like to propose with that. For that executive secretary, everything else as far as that goes. Now, are we discussing the supervisor pay also, if it's not?
Yeah.
And then the other, the other one I'd like to add is that for the supervisor ones, I'd also like to include the high school principals on that index. So everybody's on an even page and then we'll go from there. That would be my opinion is, I have my own personal reasons, not personal, but everybody knows how I feel about them. If you don't, feel free to ask. But I feel that they should be along, and I've discussed it with you and I've discussed it with Ms. Bruce Art. You know, I even talked to a lot of the supervisor ones and, you know, they will pay for them. That would be the two that I'd like to make in addition to what we have right here.
I would agree with that. In fact, I recommend it. What about the direct? Was that, what about the direct?
They're all on the need that, that say they did.
Oh, they're, they're, we're going to be indexing all the teachers. We need teacher salaries, let's give them a, is that a motion?
Yes, that would be a motion in addition to the other recommendations.
Go ahead, men. I recommend yes.
Take one, Mr. fourteen. Go with you, number C. With an A, and Morgan Bache.
Mr. Pochette, I'd like to make one specific comment. When we redid the salary schedule, Casey and I had spoken about that. They, when we redid the teachers' index and everything, we did have a couple of bumps in the road along the way. So we may have that right here. Not every situation might be correct, but it's just to bring something up.
Any adjustments you made, sometimes they're overlooked. Well, not overlooked, but maybe sometimes the system just isn't that fine to, to, to do almost any adjustment.
Or to, to move on to I L C, Mr. Karen. Just come in or maybe a, 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 we have C E E N. C D, C D. C E E N.
I do have one comment about I L E.
Which one?
I L E, dividing.
All right.
Okay. In St. Martinville, the lighting project, in investigating this, I've spoken with Mr. Pochette, Jim Pochette, and we're, I'm going to amend this a little bit. My recommendation is going to be to use Mr. Jim for this project. He is going to use Andrew Thomas Moore as consultants in the project. I recommend that Mr. Jim be the lead architect and project manager on this particular project. So that's the, all right, I thought. I'm saying he would change.
Mr. Pochette, I'd like to just make one comment.
And, and change.
And I'm going to, I'm going to agree with y'all every day. I just want to give the information that I found out and just by luck, and this is just for the St. Martinville board areas, that when St. Thomas Moore's fixing to redo their whole lighting system and they're going directly to Woodmuscle. That's how they're getting their quotes. And from what it sounds like, their quotes, because he found out that we had the LED lights over here and that's kind of like the challenge we're doing. And which is, now after that, it's a way to go because of the electric bill and the warranty one and everything. Because for twenty-five years, you don't, you're not worried about it. But the one thing that he did tell me was the price difference about going straight to them is a considerable amount. But that's just, y'all do what y'all want. If y'all want to go that, I'll go from there.
St. Thomas Moore is a private entity, private school they're covering. And for the insurance, you know, I think we should stay with.
I'll do whatever y'all want. I just wanted to give that information to you guys.
That's, that's great.
Let's say that year, yeah.
Was that what directed for the source?
Skip the, fill in the hand.
Yeah.
You know, but we're a public entity and we got to get it right. So we have a motion for I L C E E N.
Yeah. I'd like to add to F. That on, as far as the parks in Catahoula area, that we leave some along the court adjustment there. And I'd like to speak to that, Mr. Blanchard, about. I'll go with it, but I'd like to speak with you about it at a later date. Are there any adjustments with maintenance?
I do have a question for Mr. Blanchard. Now, this, this is going to help you debatable our custodians, right?
Right. Three, four months ago, the board directed us to get prices on it. We've done some discussion about costing our additional custodian. So we, this is their cell put together a package. We went out and got some bids. And actually, the bids came in a little bit better than I thought they were going to come in. All four districts in the parish, we can have complete law maintenance, thirty cuts per year for two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Right now, we're spending about forty thousand on annually on new machines, gasoline, repairs, and that kind of stuff, so.
That's not what I, hourly wages.
Right, that's not the labor involved. It's just lawnmowers and weed users and gas and stuff like that. And, you know, if you go out and argue with seven or eight or ten custodians, it's going to be, ten custodians would beat the old us. But, you know, United School of Children's School, I mean, if the board is concerned about that, consider it, Adam, because having custody, this is the present. And Casey, the budget can support.
I'll take it, Mr. Knott's motion. With the, with all the amendments, I think we can say.
I'd see, yeah, with the, with the fourteen, or I, oh. Your D and A. And Morgan Bache. Both number requests. Discuss the goods and maintenance and the goods for food service appropriate. Let's speak up.
Well, maintenance, when it rains, kind of, yeah, like about, a little water inside the maintenance. And we just want to see how much of the cost. And the food service, their storage in St. Martinville is always breaking down. I just wanted to see how much of the cost maybe we could, you know, look at because we get everything else at all the schools and stuff. I don't know, maybe Mr. Keith, I want to say something. Do you know more about your maintenance building?
Well, I think, and of course, we can, many of the board members, you know, we, over the last twelve years, we had approximately a hundred and ten million dollars of bond money which is spent in very good areas and we saw a lot of bank files open, a lot of good projects. And when I raised your question, well, the maintenance, of course, we had HVAC, we had upgrades here, we had upgrades there. However, the actual maintenance department, the facility in which the maintenance department runs has not been touched in, from the information I was given, many, many years. I have my carpenters cutting wood, my painters got to stop painting. I have my painters painting, my carpenters have to stop cutting wood. I have the electrical department stuck in the pantry. I have.